I'll order the meeting of the City of Columbiana City Council on this June 18th, 2024. We will have the invocation by Deanne and then we'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give us the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deanne, will you call the roll?
Youngus?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
D'Attilio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Banner? Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. Mark is two octaves lower. Normal, but he'll still take his, his call. Next, you received a copy of the June 4th minutes. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, those minutes will be accepted as submitted. At this time, I'd just like to mention that we are going to hold a public hearing at 7:15 regarding a rezone 1.031 acres from R2 to PUD to C4. And we'll hold that at 7:15 and one of my associates here will remind me of that time when we get to there. I, we have had, we've received three letters of communications. I'm not going to read all of those letters, but I know that you have a copy of them. And I just want to say that we've received a letter of interest to file the unexpired term on the Park Recreation and Cemetery Board, term ending December 24th, 2024. That's from Michaela Good. Next, we've received a letter of interest to fill the unexpired term on the Civil Service Commission, term ending May 15th, 2027. That letter is from Rob Rubicki. And thirdly, we received a letter, a letter from Marty Knowles requesting to hold the North Elm Street Annual Block Party on August 17th, 2024 from 3:00 to 8:00 PM. We've received all those letters and we will address those letters as we move along in the agenda. We have received two commission and board reports. We received the Park Recreation and Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes of May 20, 2024. And we also received a copy of the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of June 11, 2024. You all have them. You have any specific questions at this time? And hearing none, we'll discuss, we can discuss anything that they wish to be reviewed at a later date. At this time in the agenda, I will recognize persons designed to appear. I have Blake Stitch from Athletics to discuss the 5K run and walk Mutt Strut 2024. Blake?
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. Mayor Noel and City Council members, appreciate you. First and foremost, my name is Blake, one of directors for athletics. Just want to appreciate everything that you guys do for the city and for responders, everyone has, that they put into it. Being proudful of Columbiana, it's with great value to bring this event to Firestone Farms. Just a little report of last year is your second annual one. We had just over 5K raised for 5K first year. So, you know, thank you guys because you had every little bit to do with it as well for approving and support. And just shy of 200 participants, so that's great. This coming year, we do want to do it again, September 14th, we're presenting it. Start time will be 10 on the dot. Pretty much the support we would need from city is just the approval. The green went through, Makele got the approval from him to utilize the Firestone Farms Town Center. And just the backing of Chief Myers and the Forest Two and EMT. Going from there, the coordination is going to be simple. We're looking to lead up to event day, September 14th, starting at 10 AM. 9:50 would kind of be like a lockdown, getting things situated in place. So like I said, great event, happy to do this. Any pending questions, I'll be happy to answer. There's the attached slides also with the event form I filled out earlier on with road closures. I know Rebecca Irvin was having some questions about city limits too. I did however call Beaver Township, just you know, noting how far it stretches as well to Firestone, so. Any pending questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'm excited to bring this second annual to Columbiana.
Just a couple procedural ones. This is benefiting the charity of some sort, right?
Correct, yeah. This is benefiting Annual Charity of Ohio. So covered events associated costs, but also proceeds go to them fully.
And did you have food trucks?
We have food trucks last year, one Andy Ann's. So, yeah, anyone more than married here, but that was kind of, you know, first year getting situated, everything.
So you are planning on having?
Correct.
A question that came up about the residents, Chief, back here. People that live in the Firestone Farms development. If, you know, during the race, is there some way if somebody lives in there, it's still able? How does it work for them to get to their home? It's like while the event is going on.
Yeah, so great question. Kind of closed off on the major routes like Route 7, Route 14, you know, going to developments. But proceed with caution as a 5K entails you being on the sidewalks, you know, being pressed against the sidewalks as much as you can. Worked out quite well last year. There were some road closures, proceed with caution. That's essentially how you go about doing that. They'll still have access to their homes. Just the racers are notified ahead of time, hey, listen, you know, be on the sidewalks. If there's no sidewalks, be impressed against the curb, proceed with caution of any movements and cars. But the major routes, you know, major flow, that's very, very needed to be closed off during the race at least.
I'm just specifically talking about people who want to turn in and
Oh, yeah.
drive into, you know, their street. So that is our proceed to caution there as well? Is that how it works? Okay. Okay, so that might have to wait, but they'll be able to get in, proceed with caution. Okay. I, yeah, we might want to talk to the homeowner association, explain that to them, but we can take care of that. You know, that's how the policy will be, as you said, Chief. Okay? Any other questions?
Do we have the form or you're pleading the form, the event form?
Yes.
I just had one point. I just need clarification if it's Fairfield Township or Beaver, I'm not, I'm not sure. So we're going to have to have you reach out to Fairfield Township, so. You've mentioned Beaver, so it's, it's
Right.
Yeah. So we can, if you want to, you know, call in, ask Rebecca, she can get you that number.
Yep, too easy, I'll go ahead and do that.
Hey. Are there any other questions for Blake? Well, Blake, later in the agenda, we'll be voting on this
Okay.
and under new business, so I just want you to know.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you guys, appreciate you.
We don't have that one under new business.
I'm sorry, I thought I saw. We added new business. If that's okay. I thought I saw. Okay, I'm going to turn to the manager's report and ask Lance to give his presentation.
Okay, thanks, thanks Mayor. Don't think I can finish in four minutes, but we'll see. You know, Rick Pennell resigned from the park board. And I know that we did not mention that, filled the position at the last meeting, I just slipped my mind. But Michaela Good did submit a letter of interest and she's been a leader. Comes to the Playground Committee and lots of years of experience out there at the pool. So we appreciate her, her interest and passion. That is a mayor or manager's appointment and we did put that on the agenda today. Rob Rubicki put a letter of interest in for the vacancy on the Civil Service. That seat's been open since I believe about February and we placed that on the agenda. We did receive notice from the Division of Liquor Control that the, they approved the Town Center DORA. So we have that on the agenda tonight and we're hoping to remove it from the table and vote as an emergency if you can and, you know, move forward with that. I have been in contact with the Town Centered who, you know, tell them where we're at in the process. So they're very excited about that and it has been a bit of a process, but I think, I think we figured it out, so. The state auditor has been making some recommendations over the last recent audits. And Kevin is methodically addressing each of those issues. We did put a updated investment policy as first reading tonight. I know that Kevin and Mark worked on that and hopefully we can do first reading and get that done and just kind of get these things off of our to-do list, so. We do, we are working on uncollectible debt utility policy and legislation to hire a collection agency. And that'll come, I believe, in the next meeting maybe, so we're working on that. We need to have a public hearing on July 16th for the tax budget, followed by emergency legislation to pass that so we can meet all the deadlines. We do have a public hearing scheduled here in a couple seconds and kind of update on that once that, that starts. Utility billing conversion, the new software will be complete at the end of June and the July bills should have a new look. We did open the bid for Lime and that is on the agenda tonight. Did attend a progress committee meeting, attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting, attended the hub meeting, which consists of the Chamber Tourism, the city and now the Theater Group. The OEMA came last week and those are the folks that helped us get the grants for the stormwater project. And we reviewed the West Salem Street Stormwater Project and took pictures for closeout meeting. ODOC came last week to do a scope meeting for the Route 14 widening project in the Phase 2 safety project in the park. We met with Main Street representative and it's a program. Bryce had went to Main Street Now Conference and we, we learned what it means to be in the Main Street program and a lot of stuff we're doing is, you know, lining up right there with them. I'm not sure, we're, we're still looking into the program. I think it's time for the public hearing.
Okay. I'm going to call to order the public hearing we're going to conduct regarding the rezone of 1.031 acres from R2 to PUD to C4. And I'm going to ask Lance to make some comments at this time regarding the matter.
So there's a couple ways to do zone changes and one of them is from the city and the other one is from a particular landowner. And as you remember, this was from KDC. Kevin Price contacted us yesterday and would like to withdraw his application to do the zone change. So we have a public hearing scheduled. We figured we would just let you know that he no longer wants to make the zone change. So what we're recommending is to table the, the legislation.
Since this was an application that was actually made by the property owner, the property owner has the right to change his mind, so to speak, and say, I don't want to go through with this. And that is precisely what happened yesterday. So our recommendation is no reason to have much of a public hearing and we would suggest a motion to table the ordinance where it probably never comes back off the table.
Great. So that's some background information regarding the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? This matter? Anybody want to make a comment? Ask a question? And anybody up here would like to make any comment? Okay, well, I'm not here, since I do not hear any other people wishing to speak regarding this matter, I close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Lance, back to you.
Okay. Bryce, when he was at the Main Street Now Conference, he met some people that it's basically, it's an economic development tool using AI and it was, it was pretty informative and we're looking into that and see what we might be able to, we may be able to team up with tourism or the chamber or the county to bring some of this technology into fruition for, for the city. In each, each June, we consider legislation regarding the alternate method of apportionment of local government funds. The entities in Columbiana County consider this each year to ensure a better way to split the money up. And we place that legislation on the agenda for fund monies to be distributed in 2025. And there's two pieces of legislation. Moving on to the electric department, they're working on the drug mart service. They installed the service at the new cemetery chapel, the stick building that we're working on. Repaired, installed new LEDs around the tennis courts and the pickleball courts. The park and cemetery, they're doing burials, mowing, weed eating and the pool was up and running. They did, you know, help electric department when replacing those, those lights that I mentioned. Water department, they did update their new water assets with RCAP. And today we found out, or Keith gave us a, a new grant opportunity for the lead line project that we did, I think it was in 2022. So we're going to resubmit that application for another round. They fixed the leaky service, decommissioned a water line on Park Avenue. They did complete the consumer confidence report and that is now online. And we've updated some fence security and added some entrance security signs around the plant. Street department, we worked with Fairfield Township on, in the YNS Railroad to pave railroad tracks on Kelly Park Roads. Sounds like that went off, huh? So that was a nice collaboration there. Waste water department, they preparing to do a large dig at the, the one end of the digester that needs a valve replacement. And they prepared plant for the risk management tour for the insurance provider. We have the Chalk Fest coming up this weekend and it's, we have six professional artists. I believe there's over 20 amateur artists coming, so. A question for you. We, we approved them to close the road at 4:00 PM on June 21st, Friday, June 21st. And open it back up Sunday evening. Bridget leaves out tonight because of the heat. Some of the artists are asking if they could start on Friday night in the, in the evening and get things started and they were wondering if we could close the road at 2:00. So that's something that you can consider. I don't know that we necessarily need to vote on it, but we can at least talk about it and I could, you know, make that change if, if. So she just texted me tonight, so not exactly sure.
Close the road at 2:00 PM instead of 4:00 PM on Friday?
Yeah. Okay.
It's not like we're talking a full day or anything.
Okay. So I will get back to her and I appreciate that. Hope to see you all out there at the Chalk Fest. And that runs from 2:00 on Friday until Sunday at evening, so. Mayor, that's everything I have.
Thanks Lance. Any questions for Lance? You have received a copy of the mayor's court, mayor's court report, May 2024. And you have also received a copy of the bid results for Lime for the water treatment plant with an explanation of the recommendation to accept a specific offer or a specific bid. It's not the lowest bid. So that information is all there and you can discuss that when the motion is been brought forward. Are there any questions on either one of those items right now? Hearing none, I'm going to move to the fact that you've received a copy of the bill list for June 18th, 2024. Are there any questions or comments on the bill list? Hearing none, I'm going to entertain a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Deanne, we call the roll?
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Old Business, ordinance number 24-0-3246, second reading. An ordinance to continue the operation of the DORA within the City of Columbiana, created by ordinance number 19-0-2997 and as extended and expanded by ordinance number 23-0-3181.
So moved, second.
Motion is second. So second reading, is there any questions regarding the motion? Comments? Deanne, we call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-3247, second reading. An ordinance amending the Columbiana City zoning ordinance, thereby rezoning 1.031 acres from R2. R2 PUD planned due development to C4 intensive and automobile oriented commercial district.
We just want to move the table this one, right? We don't need to. Move the table.
It's a motion to table?
Second.
Second. And Lance has explained the rationale regarding that paper. Deanne, we call the roll?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-3248, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Lydon Oil Company, 3711 Lee Harps Road, Youngstown, Ohio, 44515, for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Questions, comments? Deanne, we call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Resolution number 24-R-649, second reading. A resolution requesting the county auditor to certify certain tax valuation information and in anticipation of levying a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments on the motion? Deanne, we call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Moving to new business. I'd like to, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the 5K run and walk Mutt Strut 2024, sponsored by Athletics.
Second.
Motion is second.
I hate to be a pain, we probably should add in waiving food truck fees. It is a charitable.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So, um. Let me go, who made the motion second now? I'm sorry.
Souter and Liston.
Okay, so
That agreed.
Is that approved by
Yes.
you?
Okay.
Okay, so we've had that stipulation. Any other comments? Deanne, we call the roll?
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the request from Marty Knowles to hold the North Elm Street Annual Block Party on August 17th, 2024 from 3:00 to 8:00 PM.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any comments? Lance, is your light still blinking red or not? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, there are no other comments regarding that. Deanne, we call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to appoint Michaela Good to fill the unexpired term on the Park Recreation Cemetery Board with term ending December 24th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion is second. Questions or comments?
Yes. I wasn't aware that we had anybody retire from this board until I got the packet. It seems to me that maybe, or this is a, a manager's appointment?
Yes.
So it's your appointment, okay. All right, I'm good with that then.
Thanks, that's good. You keep us, keep us on, keep us on our toes. Any other comments?
Just, I want to thank Rick Pennell for his many years of hard work. Park Board is not one of the easier boards that the city has. And I wanna thank Michaela for stepping up and and filling that role because it it is a lot of work and. And I really appreciate that the citizens are willing to step in and take those roles on, so thank you. And best of luck.
I just have to concur with both of those comments. Rick has been dedicated to the park, worked very hard. And we should recognize that. And when people. Ride through the park and tell us how great the park is and you have such a beautiful park and it's so wonderful. The average person does not know the work that the park board goes into to keep our park in the condition and. That it's in and making sure that it's managed properly, so. We uh, we appreciate you stepping up to express your interest and. You know, joining the team of a lot of other good people. Representing that board, so thank you. Any other comments? The AM call the roll.
DeTillio.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Youngus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to appoint our Robert Vicki to fill the unexpired term on the civil service commission term ending May fifteenth, twenty twenty seven.
So move.
Second.
I think for the. For the record. I would just like to state, so everybody knows, Robert Rubicki served on the civil service commission. I don't know for how many years, I know a number of years. Back in the early two thousands. And that's back when we were, and I happened to be on the civil service commission at the same time. And he was really a great member. We had a lot more work in those days, we joked with the, with the police chiefs, but when we would give a police test, we'd have forty to fifty people. Take the test, now how many did you get chief?
You hope to get at least two.
So it's funny, it's a different time, but it was, and we always had to score the tests. And and you know, rank them one through fifty or whatever we had, so it was a pretty complex system and Rob, it's a very articulate, good guy and. So only because I know most people, he didn't have it. Any other comments? Hey, hearing none, the AM call the roll.
Liston.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Youngus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTillio.
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to remove from the table ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two four five.
So move. Second.
Motion is second. The AM call the roll.
Graham.
Yes.
Youngus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTillio.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Entertain a motion to read the following ordinance as an emergency.
I'll move. Second.
Motion is second. The AM call the roll.
Youngus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTillio.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two four five, emergency. An emergency ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area for Dora at Firestone Farms. And enacting regulations for the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Questions or comments? The AM call the roll.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTillio.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Youngus.
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to read the following ordinance as an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. The AM call the roll.
DeTillio.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Youngus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two four nine, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Greer Lime Lime Company, a division of Greer Industries, Inc. Five ninety eight Canyon Road, Greer Mansion, Morgantown, West Virginia, two six five oh eight. For the purchase of lime for the water treatment plant.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion is second, are any questions on the motion?
The other supplier that bid, they were considerably cheaper, is there any way that their their product wasn't acceptable or?
We have documentation. We've used them in the past.
Okay.
And we, we got documentation of that, the product was not. Up to our standards and actually caused equipment damage. And we've written a letter to them and stating as why. It's.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? The AM call the roll.
Liston.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Youngus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTillio.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty four dash R dash six five zero, first reading. A resolution to exclude the approval of the city of Salem, which approval would otherwise be required for an alternative. Alternate method of appointment of local government fund monies to be distributed in twenty twenty five.
So move. Second.
Any comments on this? No comments? The AM call the roll.
Graham.
Yes.
Youngus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTillio.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty four dash R dash six five one, first reading. A resolution approving a new alternative method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in twenty twenty five.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments? The AM call the roll.
Youngus.
Yes.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTillio.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two five zero, first reading. An ordinance amending and superseding ordinance number ninety six dash O dash one five nine zero regarding the deposit. Of and investment of public funds and adopting updated investment policies. To be followed by the city of Columbiana in the deposit of an investment of public funds.
So move. Second.
That's easy for you to say. I shortened it. Are you sure? Are you sure? Any comments or questions that?
I mean, it seems like it was just updated yesterday and I'm not sure why we would. It's about twenty eight years.
Yeah. Nineteen ninety six, okay.
Is this, is this dramatically different than the policy from back then, or is it just kind of an updated?
Just updated.
Okay.
Kevin was involved.
Yes, Kevin and Mark.
Kevin and Mark put that together.
In ninety six, you were able to really be very specific in the wording of. An investment policy and you know, what you're gonna collateralize it with, as you might guess in banking today, not so much. They basically want things very broad. Because they won't agree to anything that's very specific. So basically, the banks are driving the investment policies.
Any other questions? The AM call the roll.
Souter.
Yes.
DeTillio.
Yes.
Liston.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Youngus.
Yes.
Okay. Um. In a minute, I'm going to ask the council to consider going into executive session for two reasons. And we do not plan on taking any action after. The these two, the executive sessions are are finished. So normally what our practice is here is to give people, one of the things that's great about Columbiana is we give you twice of. Twice a month, we allow the people of Columbiana to say anything they want and bring up any issue they want. And this is the, one of the times you can do that. So does anybody have any public comments? Yes, ma'am. Yes, please. Just state your name, please.
Good evening, my name is Marion Coshin. I've been a resident for about the past five years of. Or so. And I'm a resident of Springfield Road. And recently finding out that the construction at fourteen and Springfield Road. Is taking place by happenstance, Columbia Gas was walking through my property for a while. Last Friday looking to find utility hookups. And I've reached out to the the planning office and have gotten excellent responses, I know it takes some time. To find answers to those questions. But I just wanted to express my concerns specifically about the traffic being directed from, for this development for. A a two business property on one commercial lot for a Dollar Tree and a tractor supply. You know, they're coming to that space because the attractiveness of the storefront on fourteen. But they're utilizing the neighborhood road of Springfield Road to get their trucks, their customers. All that in and out to that business. I walk that street every day, I know plenty of my neighbors do. And I felt that that decision was very short sighted. To assume that maybe one or two delivery trucks week are coming to that store. That they're not gonna take that traffic to that beautiful park that we've all been caring about. And just cause some concern for for neighbors. I understand why a a study can't be done on fourteen. Or why it could take longer for a study to be done on fourteen, it's a state road. But I think if you've ever been to that intersection. It's a very dangerous intersection and you you understand those concerns that even if somebody. Waves somebody out of that parking lot, that can back up onto fourteen and cause somebody to get crushed by a truck on that fifty mile an hour road. So I really hope, I know there's already been meetings about it and like I mentioned, I'm a little late to the party. But I really hope that those considerations can be taken into mind by all parties as as that construction progresses, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, could you spell your first and last names for me so I get it correct on the record?
Um.
M A R I A N.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have a question regarding her question. When we held the meetings with the residents. Wasn't there discussion about not using Springfield Road for? Delivery trucks, what's our policy there, just for clarification?
If there's a business, they can deliver. On any street.
And for clarification, that is a federal highway. So when it was paved. Couple of years ago, it was done with federal funds. And for that reason. You know, we were able to get it, I believe it was a ninety five percent grant from. Basically the square all the way down East Park Avenue, all the way down Springfield Road, Heck Road. So the history is that that is a federal highway and. The nation wants those roads in good shape and that's why they're willing to pave them for, you know. Pennies on the dollar, so just gives you a little bit of history there, but.
Would we? Would we have an option of limiting truck traffic beyond? The the two businesses on Springfield Road?
You know, that was one questions that Marion had, I do, I have to do, we have to do a little bit more research, but we'll get you that that answer.
Hopefully. It's a delivery on that road, so it.
But I mean, I'm just wondering, because the, obviously, we're not gonna limit from fourteen. To the businesses, I don't know if we can limit from the businesses. Around to the park, because there are no. There are no businesses beyond that, I don't know, that's why I asked the question and if the answer is no, that's fine, but.
And I wanna tell you, I appreciate the fact that you said you've been talking to our planning people and they're trying to get answers for you. I appreciate relating that. And that's what you're saying as well. It's not our desire to have trucks on that road either, I mean.
A truck that goes on down that street would have a very difficult time negotiating that curve. If not impossible.
I I mean, we can definitely say it, several steps in this project. Concern has been expressed by many people about. The traffic on Springfield Road, that intersection, it it's it's tricky because it's a state route and and. But I I do know Lance has been. Working on as many different ways to try to make it better as we can, so.
Good comment, thank you very much. Are there any other comments out there? Okay, are there any council comments?
I wanna read a message I got on Facebook, it's not a, by any means a a negative message, but somebody asked me a question and this does come up once in a while, so I figured I'd read the message. And just make a quick comment on it. So the message was, Dan, is there any way we can get a single trash hauler in the city? Such a waste of the taxpayers' money to continue street repairs with the main reason is at least six different garbage trucks coming through. Sometime behind each other's to pick up a neighbor's trash. It's particularly obvious after holiday, the surrounding communities are doing this. At a lesser cost to homeowners, common sense is necessary here, thank you. This does come up once in a while, obviously. And the and the truth is that there's not a lot of, we we get these messages occasionally, but there's not a lot of desire that's been expressed to make a change like this. I do know one of our neighboring communities recently did make this change and. Using the same trash hauler that I use, they're paying thirty dollars less a quarter than I am. So there is potential for cost savings for for our residents. I'm not recommending we should do anything with this, but I do think it's worth having the conversation once in a while, at least raising it to say. You know, there are, there are options, people every once in a while do ask about it. But I've never gotten a big enough. Like ground swell to say we should consider this or you know, dig into it too deeply. But I did wanna at least read into, read in that to the record to say, you know, every once in a while we do get those comments.
The mayor and I heard a comment that the, at the wine fest that piqued our interest. And we even started to kind of kick that around a little bit before bringing it to council. I think we'd like to, we'd like to continue that and then. Bring whatever we. Kick around, bring it to council.
I know we've had discussions in the past, one of the concerns is like the HOAs that have contracts, we would have to make some some. Allowances for that and and things like that, so there certainly would be some work to be done to do that. And I'm interested to see how. It goes for this neighborhood and community, they're much smaller than we are. But you know, like I said, they got a thirty dollars less a quarter. I also get questions about curbside recycling, which I don't think most of the haulers will do because there's not enough business for them. Individually, but potentially. uh, potentially if we had a citywide contract, it might be something that those haulers would be willing to do at initial cost. So there, there are certainly advantages to it. Um, and I just wanted to raise the question because, like I said, someone reached out to me, so.
You know, I think it's a good idea to save our city streets. But I'm also the guy that likes free enterprise, I like that little guy that's out there trying to make a living, you know?
Yeah.
We have that, at ours, and it's significantly cheaper because it's all grouped in with a hundred homes probably out there, a hundred and ten. That would have to be a city, uh, city coordinated effort. Some of these cities do that, I've seen several cities that do it. And it could drive the price down for the individual homeowners.
Yeah, like I said, for a neighboring community of about two hundred and fifty homes, they're paying thirty dollars less with the same carrier than us. So, I, there's definitely is potential price, or cost savings to our community there, but a lot of people, um, and I, I agree with you, I like the free enterprise, I like, um, having opportunities for other businesses. So it's, I think the conversation is always worth having, especially as we continue to grow. You know, we I swear there's more than six, I think there's more like ten different companies servicing. Servicing the community, so, anyway, that was it.
Some good comments, I hope we follow up on.
I have a question.
Um, one Tom, I was moved into the.
Yeah. The Steel Place.
Steel Place, yeah.
Yeah.
They don't have any water or sewer out there, so he asked me tonight.
He asked you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did he ask you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, what'd you tell him?
Um, they're working with our superintendents right now.
So they got to bring it in the process to pull that.
Okay.
How far does the city take that? That's what I'm asking, like, do we make the tap and then he picks it up from there, do we get it across the street, like, what's?
Yeah, we do not get it across the street.
Oh, you don't even get it across the street?
No.
So there's just a tap fee, tap fee, but then he would be responsible to get it?
Correct. Yeah. And we don't, I think we recommended that he needs to find the, you know, if he needs to put a private lift station in, or if he can make the, the grade, you know, that's all being looked at right now, I believe.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Uh, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussion of personnel, section one twenty one point twenty two G one and a discussion of purchase of land, section one twenty one point twenty two G two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me call the roll?
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Entertain motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have me call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Need to adjourn.